I call to order the September 2021 Legislative Meeting of Media Borough Council. I ask that you stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who are at home, please understand that we're starting a few minutes late because before tonight's meeting, we held executive session in which we discussed a personnel matter concerning promotion of one of our sergeants to the position of lieutenant. You might hear more of that later on tonight during the reports section of our meeting. I'm going to take our agenda a little bit on the board of this evening. We have a proclamation that is under the mayor's report, and we have several persons here who are relevant to that proclamation. Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind going to the microphone and proclaim the way.
Okay, let's line up. I can move this out here a little bit. I'm going to read from here.
Don't worry, folks, he's a professional at this.
So, I'm going to read the proclamation, right? It's proclamation 2021-11. Whereas the Girl Scouts of the United States of America Silver Award is given to a cadet that focuses on the issues they care about, learn the facts about, and the actions they make a difference, they gain the confidence and skills that will catapult them to a lifelong success. And whereas Elizabeth Lizzie Allen of Girl Scout Troop 53488 found an issue she cared about, learned about, and took action to make differences by revitalizing the Media Borough Community Playroom. And whereas Lizzie, along with the fellow troop members Amanda Chung and Al-- how would I pronounce this-- Emily?
Alim.
Alim? Trenell, cleaned, repainted, furnished, and supplied the playroom with the new toys. And whereas Lizzie has made a commitment to create safe and clean place for children to make and play and make friends by creating a schedule for putting boys-- not boys, toys. That was-- oh, here it is. Toys and books away and sanitizing tables. And whereas the efforts of Lizzie has resulted in her earning the Girl Scout Silver Award, the highest honor a cadet can achieve. And now therefore, let it be resolved that Media Borough hereby recognizes Troop Cadet 53488 for their hard work to improve the Media Borough Community Playroom, and congratulates Elizabeth Allen on earning the Girl Scouts Silver Award. Robert Mann, Mayor, second.
I'll have an opportunity to take some photographs.
Everybody's want? Everybody wants some? Anybody want to say a few words?
I would. I would like to say that each girl earned the Silver Award, not just Lizzie. They all took a different part in the playroom. Alim took the bookshelves and the book. Amanda built the puppet theater, and then Lizzie painted and got all the new toys.
Okay. Next time you take public speaking in class, you do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. One thing I would like to ask is, I'd like to have us get a copy of that, and I think we should put that in the playroom. Because A, I think it's great that when our parents come to the playroom, they get to see who did it. And more importantly, let them recognize that it was the Girl Scouts and our Girl Scouts that did it. And hopefully, some little two-year-old that's making a mess of the place now, their parents will see it, and when they're your age, they'll be Girl Scouts. So if we can get a copy of that and get the mayor to sign that and put one in the community, I think that would be fantastic, so. Thank you very much. You've saved us a lot of work, and it looks fantastic, and it's just so cool that you all did it. So again, thank you.
And Brittany and Karen, that's something that we can do without having to give us that patch, right?
Yeah, you will. We'll get another one. We'll make the mayor sign another one.
Yes, please, go to the microphone. Tell us-- give us your name.
My name's Lizzie Allen. I would like to say that they should each get one too, because we all got one together. So like wherever it says my name, we should replace it with theirs on two different copies. They should each have one to take home too.
Done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
It only goes downhill from here, folks. We have a couple of housekeeping matters to attend to before we move into the reports section of our agenda. We have a couple sets of reading minutes. The first is for our workshop meeting of last month. Do our motion to approve the August 2021 workshop meeting minutes as submitted.
Sir Luke?
Sir Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Karen Hahn, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the August 5, 2021 workshop meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. We also had a council meeting last month, and we have a set of reading minutes. Do our motion to approve those as submitted?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Here we don't call for discussion. All those in favor of approving the August 19, 2021 council meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Before we get to public comment and privilege of the floor, a reminder to all, if you have not been vaccinated yet, please, please make that a priority. Get yourself vaccinated. Mask up and keep your distance when appropriate. We have public comment and privilege of the floor. We have two ways of participating in public comment. One way is by email, and the email address is comments@mediaborough.com. I'll repeat that. Comments@mediaborough.com. The other is to appear in person and come to the microphone and tell us your name, where you live, and what's on your mind. So let's first go to any email comments or questions. Karen Rapinoe, have you received any this evening?
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody present here tonight who would like to address council? Please come to the microphone, tell us your name, where you live, and what's on your mind.
Terry Grumzi, 342 West Fourth Street here in the borough. Just have a couple of quick questions about the project at 100 North Providence Road. Was wondering, is the construction of the housing there going to require the removal of any mature trees? And if so, how many?
I believe that that will be addressed by Mr. Lynn, as representative of the project, later this evening.
Okay, thank you. And I was just wondering, is it a fact that the Historic Architectural Review Board recommended that council deny a certificate of appropriateness for this project?
That that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have anybody else present?
Mr. President, I think for our home audience, it might be applicable that if we ask our solicitor to explain where there was an error with our denying it, because it was-- I believe it was not even in their purview of what they were denying. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor.
That is correct. Their basis of denying it was that, if I recall correctly, it's been a while, is that they didn't like the density, the intensity, the number of units. And that is not what they're charged with reviewing. That is not a zoning function. The heart is charged with giving opinions on the appearance of exterior architectural details.
Thank you. Just wanted to make it just clarify.
Well, thank you. That was something to be clarified at the time, that we approved the-- we approved the certificate of appropriateness. I don't know if you're here, Mr. Grumzi, but that was a school. All right, so we have time for the Borough Manager's Report. Brittany Forman.
Good evening. I have just a couple light announcements. The first is that if you are all invited to a block party, the resident asked us to share it with you. It's on September 25th from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. It is east front between Ratner and Manchester. And they wanted to invite the mayor, council, police, and fire personnel to come meet the neighbors.
Is anybody else coming?
I'm sure the neighbors are coming as well.
Brittany, what was that date again?
It's September 25th, between 1:00 and 6:00 p.m. And secondly, we-- this is more of a reminder, but we're moving into the final phases of the Open Space Plan project. And I just want to make sure that you guys are holding October 7th, Thursday, October 7th, at 6:30 p.m. for a working session amongst council on our Open Space Plan. And then we will also be holding-- and that will be right before our regularly scheduled workshop meeting. And then in addition, please hold Tuesday, October 12th at 7:00 p.m., which is the final public meeting on the Open Space Plan draft. And that will be a virtual meeting. And that is all that I have to report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for our manager at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along into the engineer's report. Mr. Matson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reports on just a few capital projects. We did have the pre-construction meeting for the overhaul of the street systems. It's on Monday. We have representatives from the installer who will be doing the upgrades to the traffic signals, and also with the concrete company that will be doing the improvements to the ABA ramps. So looking forward to that project. Also, we have been in touch with Penda to move forward with the paperwork for the 2021 Job Program. That project, if it indeed is oriented in mid-September at this point, we may petition Penda to have an extension beyond the October 31st deadline. Again, it's just a bit of a precautionary measure to make sure that we stay in regulatory compliance. Also, at the end of this month, what we'll be doing is our annual report for our municipal separate stormwater system. The separate comes from the fact that our stormwater is using completely different network than our sanitary system. Under the Clean Water Act, we are compelled to perform six areas of work and education to make sure that we are advising the public about issues regarding stormwater quality and making sure that we ourselves are using good housekeeping practices. So those reports will be due at the end of this month. The work continues at the armory. So we did retain a contractor to do some work to do improvements to the roof and mitigate stormwater issues that we face in the armory. The building was in need of care. So again, if that contractor has been out of the site, we believe this will work well with the continues of trailer jobs. So again, there's a lot of activity here in the capital planning and the capital works being done. Unless there are any other questions, it's all ended.
Any member of council have any questions for our engineer at this time?
I do have a question, Kevin. It's only from, I remember years back, in fact, we tried to do paving as soon as we could every year because of something that happened years ago where it ran into the fall season of leaf collecting when they were trying to pave it. It was just a mess. So I just caution you all to, you know, maybe better wait a year than try to do them both if that's going to happen.
I would have-- I mean, I agree with Peter. So if it looks like it's getting too close to leaf season, and we're able to do it, if we're able to postpone it, I mean, we don't have a street that's falling apart. But if we're able to do it, I don't disagree. If we're not, then we just got to put the pressure on it, get it done before the leaves come down.
Sir, to our solicitor, is there any issue with using the fuel funds within a certain period of time? Now, okay, Carrie, just follow here. Okay, good.
Just, I will mention that's created in the contractor again. We did end up going with a second posting of the red room. So I think we had a question originally early in spring, and then the bids came back high. So virtually, the repost shifted things to the right as far as our counter. But in the event that we run into leafs, I want to make sure the contractor is aware that we might want to table until it's ready. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Matson. We now have time for the solicitor's report. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to get on some items on the agenda as we go through them. I don't have anything now, thank you.
All right, thank you. Does any member of council have any questions or comments for Mr. Scott at this time? Seeing that there are none, we move along to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor, if you can complete your report. Part of that was devoted to the proclamation. So what else do you have for us tonight?
Okay, let's see. During the month of August, there were 646 complaints. I'll just read a couple of them of interest. Disorderly conduct, 17. Medical emergencies, 60. Traffic accidents, 33. Assisting the public, 99. And 34 fire alarms. So a couple of those are up from the previous month. Another, I want to just address Dining Under the Stars. It's been close to a sellout for the last five, six months. Almost every seat is filled, and they're turning at least two shifts a night, and some are able to get three. They're now looking at extending it to October, and it seems like most of them are in agreement with that. So that's good for the restaurants, good for the town, and good for economic development. So that's my conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody in council have any questions for the mayor at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along to the council committee reports. We will begin, as always, with properties, public works, and fire. Mr. Robinson.
Good evening. I will try to get through this relatively quick, but the mask feeling that does not make life pleasant. I do not have a fire report tonight, but as I say, every month, anybody who's interested in working with the media fire company, please stop by. They can use you as a firefighter or as working in the administrative side. If you look around town, you'll see some red and gold signs that are looking, that are asking for help. Most of those are out in front of some sort of a volunteer firefighter and or administrator for the department. I'm going to try to get some for our council with front lawns. But if you're interested, please stop by the fire company. On my agenda this evening is on number two is a request, and I will do this in a form of a motion, that we appropriate $50,000 to do a stormwater project for North Olive Street. For those that are aware, this is at North Olive, south of where the bridge is at the bottom of the hill. This has been an ongoing issue that has continued to progress, shall I say. Part of it is an infrastructure section that is having age problems. And we were hoping that we would be able to combine that project when we were doing our larger stormwater project. But it's obvious that we cannot postpone it any longer. There are now becoming some issues with some residents' lawns. As I indicated at workshop, I applaud our residents. They have been extremely pleasant, extremely understanding, a lot more than I would ever be. But it is something that I think we need to take care of now. And so I have asked to approve a motion that we authorize up to $50,000 for stormwater project repairs on North Olive Street, contingent with agreement of our solicitor, with legal areas, and our engineer with regarding the project itself.
Second.
Writing something down, folks, about this motion. I think as a point of clarification, a procedural point, this is something we'll ratify. It's a decision that we made two weeks ago, so I think properly, the motion is not ratified.
But I have no change I can ratify. I wasn't sure if anything had been done. I know that we gave the thumbs up to start doing work on the project, but if it's a rat-- I will amend my motion to reflect ratification.
Okay, great. And Seconder?
Second.
All right, we have a motion then to ratify a decision that we made a couple of weeks ago to authorize up to $50,000 for Coloss Street Stormwater Repair, contingent on the satisfaction of any concerns of the solicitor and of our engineer. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing that there are no questions, we're called for discussion on the motion. All those in favor of ratifying authorizing up to $50,000 for Coloss Street Stormwater Repair, again, contingent upon satisfaction of issues raised by our solicitor or our engineer, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next on my agenda is something that's interesting. I mean, I hate to say it, I can remember when G wasn't even part of the word, and when the 3G, 4G, and that, we're looking at 5G. The communication lobbyist, shall I say, in Harrisburg did a very good job of convincing our legislators in Harrisburg that we at the local level shouldn't have the right to determine where these 5G boxes are placed. They're not that big, but that has now been taken out of the responsibility of our zoning and our planning. They-- it literally could be placed on any telephone pole within our community. As our solicitor referenced, it's actually somewhat of a plus for us because we are accustomed to above-ground lines and poles and things like that. I do feel sorry for some of our neighbors that have underground electric, and so all of a sudden, one day, they could come home from work and have a, up to, I think, a 50-foot pole in their front lawn with a 5G communicator on it. But long story short, we really don't have any choice in this matter, so I'll make a motion that we authorize the advertisement of a 5G ordinance for consideration in our October legislative meeting.
Motion's been made. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion or questions concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing the advertisement of a 5G ordinance for consideration at our legislative meeting next month, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Next on the agenda is the naming of the Fifth and Brumall Street Pocket Park. And what I would like to do is, before we get into that, I'd literally ask Peter and Sarah. They did the Owens work. This is just one of these things that ended up on property's agenda, but you all did the work. So please, you know, go into a little bit of detail. I know, Peter, you weren't at workshop. I think it's a fantastic idea. I love the idea of the direction that you're going with the name and some of the things you're going to be doing. So fill us in a little bit before we do the motions.
Well, I will start, and Sarah can fill in as she sees fit. We set out, the two of us, with some really excellent community members to try to determine whether there was a way for us to try to begin to scratch at the African-American history and heritage in this community by the name of this park. And I literally mean scratch the surface, because what we've learned is that's all we can do with this. And but we can do so much more through other means, like our website and our Herstory Archives Commission and so forth, to really bring these stories to life. So this is just sort of the first step for us.
It is a first. It is a first step, and the committee, the group, has expanded to include people like Adam, who's working to help us with historic information, which is just wonderful. And then some of the people who were part of the committee, their histories. It's amazing.
No, I truly appreciate the work that you all did. And I think that when I heard the name, I couldn't think of a better name for the new park. And I think if we can put some plaques or information in there so that our newer residents do recognize, you know, what media was like years ago, and educate our new residents so they can become more acclimated with what makes media such a great town. So with that, I'll make that in a form of a motion that we formally change the name of the Fifth or change our name Fifth and Brumall Pocket Park to that of Heritage Park.
Second.
Motion has been made, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or questions concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of naming the Fifth and Brumall Park-- or naming the Fifth and Brumall Pocket Park Heritage Park, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And last on the agenda, I'd say spending money to beginning my agenda, spending money at the end of the agenda, is authorizing a change order for the fire suppression system at our Public Works Garage. I do apologize to council. I think everyone on council knows that I'm not a fan of having things dropped on our laps the day of a legislative meeting. The memorandum just-- I was just brought to my attention the other day. We were able to get the memorandum only out today. I did have the opportunity to speak to our finance chair prior to tonight's meeting, and he did concur that he thought it would be-- that funds would be available and it would be money well spent. This goes into our new Public Works Garage. We felt that it would be in our best interest if we had it sprinkled. We have significant assets inside of that building. It's located in the area that people might not notice if there is a fire initially. So we think it's something that's smart, and to be candid, as property chair, I think any of the properties that we have, we should be looking at sprinkling because A is the best thing to do, it's the safest thing to do, and it's the most protective way just to keep the building going. So our engineer prepared a memorandum. I hope everyone had the opportunity to see it. But in essence, it's looking for a change order of $35,200 to add the sprinkler system. And Mr. Engineer, correct me if I'm wrong, that will also encounter the cost to bring a supply line to the garage.
Again, my understanding of the change order scope that was prepared by the contractor's team is that the $35,200 more or less would cover the cost of the sprinkler system within the building.
Okay.
However, when we contacted Aqua, Aqua would have to make a service app at a main which said no cost. And then they were in line more or less to the railway line. But the borough would be responsible for installing a 200-- it's about 200 feet worth of copper line, including a meter pit assembly. And again, I was pointing with Aqua trying to get this number, but in the historic pricing that I've seen with other projects, I'd request tonight that the council consider a half of this portion of the project for $15,000 to include that. But at minimum, the change order request for the contractor, the request tonight is for $35,200. But I think it would be prudent, in lieu of waiting for the budget season and going through that, to just do this tonight, to say, just to tap on an additional $15,000 to provide a half for the 200-foot line that was included in the project.
And I will defer to our finance chair, who has issue. I do apologize, Peter. I did think that the full project, including the line, was $35,200.
So it's really 47, or at least as a cap.
As a cap.
It's 47, which is, what's that, 25% again on the cost of the building roughly. It's significant. Tell me, does a water line to that area, to that property, add other benefits that the Public Works crew could utilize? In other words, are we being shortsighted by only providing water to this building? Should we be doing something more?
No. Again, that number is a conservative. That number could be five things. It's just based on taking a look at other projects that were similar size. And my belief is that a two-inch copper line will be required. It may be that we could install a smaller line and have the savings. However, as long as the line is running to the building, to the meter pit, then we could also provide water service for any other use that might--
And I think that's what Peter, that's what you're referencing, correct?
That's right. That's what I was wondering.
Okay. Instead of having a dry Public Works Garage, we would have a wet Public Works Garage.
That's right. So the water service would be, again, it's a tap for, really, for the property, not just solely for the building. Again, my estimate for the $15,000 is, based on composite projects, taking a look at things, and trying to get the best estimate that would get the job done. But leave enough that-- I don't think we would need $15,000. I think it would be substantially less than that, but I don't look short-sighted and have to come back at some time. Just want to do this once and have it done. But the number that came in was for the sprinkler system. And I want to make sure that council has the full picture of what our intentions are and what the realistic costs are on it.
Thank you. And again, I do apologize to council. I don't appreciate it when this happens, but this is one of these things that if we don't keep moving forward on this, you know, we could postpone for a month, but then the contractor is pretty much wrapping up, so we're going to have to pull him back if not. We have to go out to bid again, which is going to cost us a lot of money just to go out to bid. Or our third alternative is to say, you know what, we'll take our chances, and we won't sprinkle the building. So that's where we are.
Just a little bit of context. We budgeted, I think, $400,000 for this project wholly. The bid result came back $219,800, which is substantially less than what we budgeted. So there was additional-- So there was additional ring in the budget. We had one change order, I think, last month.
With five, correct.
For a little over five thousand to install some ballards, which the contractor, again, did very well and did pretty much like a split, it's a technical term. And so even with this two sixty or two seventy-five, we're still substantially under budget, which is great for these sorts of capital projects.
Any member of council have any other questions concerning this motion?
I just wanted to emphasize that the last point that he made is, I think, probably one of the most significant ones, that in our budget, which has been running successfully ahead of itself this year, we already budgeted more than this whole project would cost with the addition. Not that I love always overestimating things for budget purposes, because it makes these kind of decisions too easy, actually, but in this case, I think it is important, and as chair of the finance committee, I think it's a reasonable expense.
Then I'll, until, then I'll make a motion, we move forward.
I'd like to ask, is this, I guess what I'm surprised about is, you were saying that the two-hundred-foot line, copper line, could be five thousand, could be fifteen thousand, that's to me a pretty big spread.
That's right, Lisa, and I can explain that. So when I was looking at, there is a service that we have used now for about five years, probably longer than that, a pen bid, and that's where we post all of our projects. And that service contains information for five candidates for projects just like this one, and there's a rolling average of pricing that they use. Some of those projects are smaller, so you're looking at a fifty-foot service line, some are larger. So when I looked at this, I can't give an exact figure until we have a plumber come out and really give us a hard number. My desire tonight is to give enough of a cap, it's called a cap in this change order, so that I can do the job up to a certain cap without going over. But there, when you're doing the caps, it's no different than looking around the neighborhood and looking at housing and saying, this is the typical cost of a house. For this type of project, for this specific lineup, the range was somewhere from five thousand, the low end, to about fifteen, the high end. So I wanted to be conservative, I just want to, I want to make sure that we have enough to get this done. At the same time, I don't want to have to come back for another, you know, set of nickels to...
You're saying you need to call in a plumber, it feels like a separate project.
It's for, that's, it is a...
We could just consider this a separate project and look at it with a little more time and thought, go on fifty thousand dollars more on mine.
And Lisa, that's exactly what I just said, if you were listening, I said that we could go out to RP, we could go out to RP again, if you want to go through the cost of developing an RP, bringing in another company to do it, that's fine. We have a contractor here who would be able to do the work, the plumbing is something different. So, I mean, if that's the desire that you have...
But that's what the work is.
It's not, no, it's, the whole project is, the whole project would be fifty thousand dollars. That's the sprinkler system, that's the...
Do we do this kind of work?
Do we do this kind of work?
Would be done under the existing contract as one of their subs.
Right. Would it be a plumber, that doesn't work?
It would have to be a plumber, that's right. Yeah, there's the sprinkler, again, there's a sprinkler feeder, there's a whole series of disciplines, it would be somewhat with the certifications and accreditations to show that they've done this sort of work. It has to be inspected by our officials to make sure it's compliant, but it would be, but done by the appropriate sprinkler company.
But do you agree that this is a separate project in and to itself, because there's nobody currently working on the project that has that kind of skillset?
It's not uncommon, Lisa, for example, if you've ever been in, when we put projects out to bid, it's not uncommon at all that prime fitters use subcontractors. A good example is the road program. The road program primarily uses equipment to surface the roads, and they don't necessarily always have expertise when it comes to installing the concrete ADA ramps. So it's very common that the road program contractor, who, believe it or not, there's only a handful in Delaware County who have relationships with local concrete suppliers. It's a good example of a prime sub, a project. This is no different, in my opinion. Again, I think we had one project where we had one prime and four different subs in different disciplines. But they're required because not every general contractor has the certifications and clearances for all those sorts of different disciplines.
Right. So I'm saying we need to call in the people that have the right skills that, to me, it seems like a separate project that could be done after we hopefully figured out if we've sent the two thousand dollars in.
Again, in my estimation, in talking with, it's a competitive price, I think that this work is necessary for this job, I think to, we could wait, again, you're absolutely correct. I don't see why it would be necessary to wait. While we wait, the building, I hate to say, could potentially be at risk because it's not protected, and it might be, it might be prudent to just have this work done now instead of waiting what could be another six months for, for whatever reason we have to delay. So, again, we have an option tonight, it's an option to issue this change order. Again, my recommendation is that we move forward, it was cleared from Lynn's office, her design team, our code enforcement officer, Jim Jeffrey, also, the fire marshal would like to see this installed, our public works director, who is going to be using the site every day, would also like to see this facility installed. That's the recommendation that's applied.
Thank you, I do have a question for Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott, does it make any difference legally for this motion that we, that we quote not make a single motion, or should we recommend that we split the motions as between the fire suppression system and the water line meter bid?
You can do it either way. You can choose to just sprinkler now and later connect water to it, or you can do it when you want.
But my point is, if we do it tonight, do we need to have two motions or just the one motion?
Well, that depends on what you want to do tonight. If you want to do the whole kaboodle, one motion, fine.
That's a legal term, right?
Yeah.
Legal, legal as well as an engineering. As I understand it, the motion, Paul, is...
The motion is to move forward with the project with...
Fifty thousand two hundred dollars.
Max, cap.
Kaboodle.
Kaboodle.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Sorry, further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for further discussion. All those in favor of authorizing a change order for a fire suppression system as well as a water line and meter pit for the Public Works Garage in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand two hundred dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, please say nay.
No.
The motion passes six to one.
That concludes my report.
Any member of council with any question before Councilman Robinson at this time? Seeing as there are none, we will then move to the report of Councilwoman Lisa Johnson, MBA, Historic, Public Safety, and Civil Service.
Thank you. I just have one announcement that I'd like to make, that this Saturday between ten and four PM at Third and Jackson, just outside of the Borough Hall, we're going to paint our first street mural, which is part of the traffic calming project that we did earlier this year. And we are looking for volunteers that would be interested in getting involved in painting the street. So if you'd like to sign up, go to our website, and there's a scheduling Jamie, or I don't, I don't remember what it's called, scheduling Jamie, but you can sign up for various shifts of painting or other activities that we have, you can hand up, or just come and, don't sign up, just come and enjoy the music, there's children's music and some, you know, light food, and hopefully a nice day. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Johnson, I just wanted to make a clarification, I believe it's next Saturday, the twenty-fourth?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This week, it's an exciting event, so we're excited for it, but this is the sixteenth, so it'll be next, next week.
It's quite a time. Okay, bye.
All right.
I have a question with that, I mean, I know it might not bother you, but as far as, does anybody know if the media garage sale is happening this Saturday? Because people are talking about it, and it's just like, I mean, people are feeling something, okay, I can see it, let's do it, everyone can, it's been on social media.
Okay.
Good person.
So media garage sale this weekend?
Just Saturday.
Just Saturday. Just Saturday, this coming, this coming Saturday?
Correct, the eighteen.
All right.
Twenty minutes for the mural.
Does any other, any...
I'm confused, why is this coming Saturday?
The garage sale.
Does it go down?
The eighteen.
So, okay.
All right, has any, has any other questions or comments for Councilwoman Lisa Johnson?
Just a question, Lisa. I forget where I read it, but I understand that the grant which we were pursuing for your traffic coming on Third Street was denied. Are we still going to move forward with that project between the denial of the grant, we didn't get the grant? And then also that our own police traffic studies reflected that out of the streets on the Eastern District, that was, had the lowest speed or lowest traffic volume of any of your three areas. If we're going to continue to, you know, spend, I mean, with the grant is one thing, if it's coming out of the budget, that's another.
That will be discussed at the next Public Safety Committee meeting next Thursday.
All right, so anybody who's interested, please come to the Public Safety Committee meeting next week. Any other questions or comments for Councilwoman Lisa Johnson? Seeing as there are none, we'll move along to Fair Trade Farmers Market Shade Tree, Environmental Advisory Council, Vice President Amy Johnson.
Thank you. I don't have anything legislative on my agenda, but as always, I like to remind everybody that the Media Farmers Market is held every Sunday from ten to one PM on Edmond Street between Front and State. So be sure to visit their website, you can see a full list of the vendors that will be there each week. And upcoming this month is also, I forget the date, but is Neil's Sharpening Services, which is a really cool vendor where you can get gardening tools sharpened, kitchen tools sharpened, scissors and various things. So, it's something unique that will be at the market this coming month. And just a reminder, if you haven't done so already, you can pick up your yellow compost bucket at Media Borough Hall during business hours. If you aren't able to come, if that does not suit your schedule, you can always email maybe Karen or Brittany, and our committee members would be happy to drop off the bucket to you, or we could possibly meet you at the Farmers Market to give you a bucket. Other than that, I just want to alert council that there'll be two different proposals coming to you before the next workshop, one coming from the EAC and one coming from the Shade Tree Commission. So that will be just something that I'll be presenting at the next workshops, if you can ask. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. If there are any questions or comments, Vice President Amy Johnson. Seeing as there are none, we'll move along to Community Development and Historic Architect Review Board, that's my portion of the agenda. I have three action items and also one announcement. The announcement relates to the CDC meeting this month. Those of you who were here last month know that I indicated that the CDC meeting this month might, that we might be visited by representative of the county to discuss their thoughts about the Orange Street lots. It turns out that they've decided that they need a little bit more time, and they would prefer to come to the October meeting of the CDC, that would be on October twenty-sixth, Tuesday. We're hopeful that they will come forward at that time. It's not something that is set in stone, so please pay attention to the agenda for the CDC. It should be out shortly, or the Friday before the CDC. And check to see whether or not that topic is listed on the agenda, if that is something of interest to you. So, again, those folks who are planning to come to the CDC meeting this month to listen to county representatives discuss their thoughts about the Orange Street lots, that is not going to happen this month, the county has decided that it is going to come to the CDC in October, fingers crossed, but that's the current plan. I have three action items, the first is fairly straightforward, is a final subdivision, well, actually, why don't I do the easier one first? I'll just kind of flip them. Lot line adjustment at six twenty, Painter Street. For those of you who are unfamiliar with where Painter Street is, think of Dean Keyes Tully. And if you're familiar with Dean Keyes Tully, you've had the misfortune of making the acquaintance of Dean Keyes Tully, you know that is at the intersection of Brook Street and Baltimore Avenue. Those who are newer to the town might be more familiar with Pearlup and Dean, cutting corner from Dean Keys, Brook Street is, it comes in there. Brook Street leads down to our industrial district, and if you follow it down, it makes a right-hand turn onto Painter Street, and about half, roughly about a third of Painter Street is within Pearlup. These properties, six, I think it's six-ten and six-twenty Painter Street, are on Painter Street, right after that right-hand turn off Brook Street. The common owner, the two properties sit next to each other, they're a little bit oddly shaped, they're kind of L-shaped. The owner would like to change the lot line such that rather than having two L-shaped properties, they're two rectangles. When a request is made for a lot line adjustment such as this, the issue is whether or not the lots that will be created by lot line adjustments somehow run afoul of our rules. This lot line adjustment that's being requested does not. It does not create lots of land that are too small for the industrial area, it doesn't create lines that are on ballon shape, if anything, this makes more predictable lots, lot configurations. So when we have a lot line adjustment request that does not run and follow our rules, it is a by right application, and we are obliged to grant it. The, the planning commission, I'm sorry, they discussed this at their meeting this month, and they agreed unanimously to recommend that Borough Council approve the request of lot line adjustment, subject to addressing conditions of the engineer's letter. So I'll make that motion tonight, that council approve the lot line adjustment with regard to six-twenty Painter Street, subject to addressing the engineer's letter concerning this requested adjustment.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, any discussion or questions on the motion? Hey, all those in favor of approving lot line adjustment six-twenty Painter Street, subject to the engineer's letter, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
So the second item, action item tonight, is number two under my report, it's the final subdivision land development application for one hundred North Providence Road. This has been before council several times before, both with regard to a certificate of appropriateness because the property lies within one of our historic districts, and that is a formal requirement for an application such as this. It's also come to us by way of a preliminary land development application. Tonight is a final land development application, it is a much narrower in scope than the preliminary. We do have with us a representative for the project, Bob Lynn. This is a project with some complexity to it, and I thought it would be worthwhile for members of council to kind of refresh themselves on the project, and who better than Mr. Lynn, who is the project representative? Mr. Lynn?
Thank you. Always a pleasure to appear. This is just a quick chronology, I'm passing out. This project's had actually been in the borough now for three weeks shy of a year, this will be the fourteenth appearance in one capacity or another, and it's amazing, people at home don't realize how much time and effort you spend and the borough spends to review an application, but it is its fourteenth official appearance in some capacity. The list is on there, I woke up through October, last year, early October, it first appeared in front of the CDC, the sketch plan, it went through the hard process, the historical process, the planning commission, the engineer, just got everybody else with the log capture as well, so we're in good shape. This particular project is one I actually really enjoyed. This project came to me with two other potential developers, prior to our current developer, and John Taddy is our current developer, wanting to tear down the historic house. I frankly had no interest in taking on the project with those particular developers, this developer fortunately has a really lovable properties, and he took it on with the mission of restoring the house. And I heard a comment earlier, perhaps Harv was not enamored, that's actually not accurate, Harv actually applauded him for his efforts to restore the house, and was very appreciative of his efforts to restore the house. They only had a question about other development of the parcel. So, the certificate of appropriateness was ultimately reviewed and granted by Borough Council, but again, Harv was particularly pleased that this particular property was being saved. I woke up to a history lesson tonight, it's kind of neat to see some of these older properties and where they go. I'll give you seven or eight quick chronology points, and then I'll go into the development. Going way back, 1683, the Providence Great Room is laid out. I don't remember that. 1750, the stone portion of the Mitchell House, which still stands, was built, 1750. So it's quite a while ago. The Providence Friends Meeting House across the street, which is part of this historical district, was built in 1814. I haven't memorized these. I've loved some, but I'm reading, forgive me. And then probably one of the neatest things about the borough, 1820, 1866, this was a village. There was a little village around the house. There was a tensmith, a tailor, a wheelwright, a general store, and a blacksmith, which is kind of a neat thing to think about where we started as a borough, before the borough was founded. The last of that disappeared in 1866, so that village has since disappeared. Frankly, I'm not even sure, other than the house itself, why it's a district, because all the historical aspects are along the village. This house was built sometime prior to 1839. They can't pin the date down exactly, but that's listed in the Delaware County Archives as prior to 1839. Borough media was only founded in 1850, so think about when that was. And the General Billingham House was the first president of Borough Council, just before Bryant. He was there from 1851 and became president of Borough Council. That's Isaac Holm, and that's where you hear the name of the former house. I also think of as Lewis House, because the Lewis family lived there for years and years, and eventually deeded the Mitchell House to the borough. That's where it came, it was a gift from the Lewis family. So I call it the Lewis, Holm, and Taddy Farmhouse Party. He was also, by the way, the first president of the first National Bank of Media, which became the PNC bank when they built in 1900. So this gentleman had a lot of history. Operated a general store out of the house. So it's kind of a really neat thing, hidden behind the dam and the forest all these years, and finally found it there. Forest is gone, and as you watch going by the house, there have been some significant efforts already moved away to restore the house. This gentleman also volunteered, without asking, to put some of his marketing talent to work on the Mitchell House, because it needs a little bit of help. It's a little bit of an orphan right now. And although it's not part of this particular application or private promotion, he's already reviewed the list from 2013 where it needs some help, he's going to do everything on that list except plaster and siding. So this gentleman's going to put some effort into what's immediately settled in the Mitchell House, have a new piece. That's sort of the chronology of the building. I'm going to go into specifics of the application, and it's really not that complicated. It's basically about a 37,000 square foot parcel of land, it's a large parcel of land. A lot of fronts of Providence Road. The house itself is the centerpiece that we kept and restored. They're going to develop a pair of single homes, two residences, and a pair of twins. It's always a complicated word, meaning two houses and two houses. So the total of four dwellings being built that will house six additional families on the site. The development of the site is 100% zoning compliant. It's an ER2 zoning district, which allows for singles and twins, all lot sizes, all the setbacks, all the impermeable surface, all the building coverage are 100% compliant. So the project was developed, the zoning in mind, and a sensitivity towards the house adjacent. So the house will be restored, and the other projects will be developed. Mr. Mattson wrote a review letter, which we, on September 4th, which we reviewed in detail at the Planning Commission meeting last week, and the Planning Commission ultimately made a motion to approve the project, suggested an approval of the project before to nothing, unanimously, with condition being that the engineer's review letter be complied with, which is not an issue. Most of the items in the engineer's review letter are administrative, some involve external agencies such as a PennDOT approval, DEB sewer module approval, typical things of its nature. There's also been a really, really nice effort to work with the neighbors behind on Holm Street, and they have really appreciated it, and there's appeasement from Holm Street through the property, and we've worked to make sure that they are happy with that appeasement. And we added a few speed bumps and some vegetation, some other things they requested. So they came to every meeting with me, until this is the first meeting they're not at, at the Planning Commission meeting with Mr. Holm, and Jeremy Zeller represented the neighbors, and everybody is nodding their head up and down. So it's been a long, long, and very, very successful process to get to the CDC. I don't have much more history going on the project. If there are Mr. Ramses asking questions, might as well address it now. There are a total of 15 trees being removed from the site. The trees, however, are being replaced in a ratio in excess of the borough's ordinance for tree replacement. I don't have the calipers tonight, because we've discussed them so many times, I apologize, I wasn't prepared to talk about trees. But it's not only being replaced in combat, it's being replaced on site in excess of the borough's ratio of trees. It's a good opportunity for us to make sure we have a great landscape, but from the rear as well, being a good neighbor to new homes, new homes that exist in townhomes. Which, by the way, are also the historic district, will build the historic district, we're not sure how, but it will exist as well. That's basically the summary I have of the project. I don't know if Mr. Mattson has anything to add or Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mattson, I don't know if you have anything to add, but if you would like to add something, now would be an appropriate time.
The project did receive a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission of a letter that was reviewed again in detail. The applicant agreed to comply with the items that are in that letter. So again, any recommendation tonight would be contingent upon satisfaction of those outstanding issues.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mattson. And as a reminder, Mr. Scott, if I mistake this, please correct me. I'm often corrected at home, so I'm used to it. This is a final approval. We cannot raise issues at final stage and were not raised at the preliminary stage.
Right.
All right. So I'm prepared to make the motion tonight that we approve the final subdivision land development application for 100 North Providence Road, contingent upon satisfaction of the Borough Engineer's Review Letter.
I'll second that.
Motion's been accepted. Any discussion or question on the motion? All those who favor a subdivision land development application from 100 North Providence Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That's September 4th, your review letter from the record. And I really appreciate everybody on this group, and spent a lot of time looking at this project, as well as the side table. So I appreciate the effort. It's a building worthy of preservation. I don't think we'll be disappointed when this building, Mitchell House, is going to get some attention as well. And since you've made a mistake in giving me the mic, if you haven't been down to see your new public works building, you really should visit. You should be proud of what you've accomplished there. It's a great building, high garage doors, wide garage doors, everything out of the weather for the first time, electricity, whether or not for the first time down at that location, protecting a million dollars worth of equipment. It was really, and by the way, some of the bids were well within $100,000 plus in excess of a low bid. Low bidder also wrote the Sally Court for us, we knew who he was. Of your place he was a low bidder, he did a stellar job. There were no change orders driven by the design or by his ability. That's a pleasure when you can do a project like that, zero change orders. So even though his bid was attractive, those others were not attractive. Seven bids received, many were $100,000 plus. So I think the budget was actually fairly adequate based upon projections. He was very, very cost effective. And there were at least seven different subcontractors in the project, just to hear the flavor. So you should be proud of it. It's going to be here long afterward serving, and it's a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. And I would be remiss if I did not comment about the role of our Historical Architectural Review Board in the 100 North Providence Road application. There's been some discussion about the scope of their review, and of course, we rely on our solicitor in making those types of legal judgments. But I think it is more than fair to say that the time spent, this project spent in front of our Harv, was very, very helpful in focusing this project and suggesting improvements on this project. So their role in this has been very, very important, instrumental. So I don't think that, and I think that Mr. Lynn will agree, that they had impact upon the final project.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, they had exactly the right spirit of the job in mind, and we all looked well together.
All right. The last item that I have on my report concerns a resignation from our Planning Commission. We have been notified by a member, Dan White, that due to a change in his employment situation, that he must resign from the Planning Commission. His term expires December 31, 2021, so the expiration is coming up very soon. I understand that our Planning Commission does have some letters of interest on hand, but if anybody who has not yet submitted a letter of interest would like to do so, please get those letters of interest out to us as quickly as possible. Or to our run of the borough manager, you'll find the contact information on our website. So again, if you are interested in serving on our Planning Commission, please send a letter of interest. But I have the sad task of making a motion tonight to accept the resignation of Dan White regretfully from the Planning Commission, effective immediately.
Second.
Motion's been accepted. Any discussion? All those who favor rescinding the resignation if they await from the Planning Commission, term is firing 12/31/21, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the motion passes unanimously.
All right. That is the end of my report.
Any questions for President Hall?
I understand, have we been seeing copies of those resumes of people that are interested? You said that the Planning Commission had resumes on hand.
We've seen the resumes of those who we voted on, so after they made a recommendation. I think.
Yeah, so in, I was going to say around the January timeframe, they were looking for resumes. And at that time, the Planning Commission actually received a lot, a lot of resumes at that time. And so when they would move forward with the two that they, you know, did at that time, they gave you guys those resumes before you made your appointment. But I will say that, you know, they had a large pool from just as recently as a few months ago.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was, because again, the reservation, and all of a sudden, you know, they were soliciting resumes. Oh, cool. That's great.
They got stuff to work with.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't know if this is a question for you, Brian, or for you, Bob. The dispensary business that's right at the corner of Providence and State Street.
The Providence. With the old Starwars.
We annual changes, I mean, to require them to be in certain places in our town. I like to believe that zoning appropriate would could be concerned on.
I think I can handle some of this, Bob. So yes, we did change, we added to our zoning. We designated our industrial district as location for a marijuana dispenser. This is a CDB dispenser, it's different. A way they sell is a product that has been deemed by our General Assembly to be a legal product. It's a retail product, so they may sell it anywhere retail can, is permitted in the borough.
I am a little, I share your frustration, what I assume is your frustration, because their sign says cannabis dispenser.
Right.
And that's not really what they are. Because that, in my mind, I think everybody's mind is more than a CDB dispenser. So I'm a little annoyed with that, but the use is not a, is permitted retail use of that regulation.
And we asked them to change it. Decide.
Don't the signs have to be approved? Bob, do the signs have to be approved?
Signs have to be approved as to size and location, but generally not content. They have first amendment protections, just like everybody else, although commercial stuff, it's a lesser degree protection. To the mayor's question, Jim Jeffrey and I are kicking that around.
There were a lot of questions that got in on the start of that.
I know. And it is misleading, so we're still thinking that through.
All right. We'll look to the report on that.
Any other questions?
All right then, we'll move along to Councilman Kevin Boyer for Recordation Word of Advice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I didn't use my plot side to see, I can't see, so I think that way. Just a few announcements, REC did manage to have their last movie this past Friday. It was supposed to be coordinated with the school's opening picnic, but I think the school canceled the picnic out of COVID concerns. But since REC did pay for the movie, they decided to run it, and apparently, what I understood, there were about 50 or so people there, and it was a good turnout, it was a nice night, so.
Watch the movie?
It was Raiders of the Dragon, Raiders of the Last Dragon. And I did hear, I don't like fucking sound coming from people, so I can't get my, well, it was a last minute thing, because again, they were going to cancel it, then we would have lost the money that we paid last year, and could not be seen with that, so they did it, and it went lost. Unfortunately, REC is going to cancel the Halloween Extravaganza, again, out of COVID concerns. In lieu of that, we're putting together a plan to have some sort of treat available, some sort of, not food, but some sort of craft available. At Pearlup, we had talked about doing that last year, but things were a little bit, let's say, too Cody at that point. With things being a little bit better this year, we're going to try to do something like that. Lori has given approval, as long as there's been food, so we'll try to do something where at least people can pick up a craft in the Halloween Extravaganza. But again, given the fact that many elementary school kids would feel the vaccinated, REC thought it wasn't a good idea to have the traditional Halloween party this year, so hopefully next year. But I am sorry for that, but I think it was a good decision. We got that rec.
I understand that people have a tote baggage.
Exactly. So you can, there's lots of very easy crafts they can buy, and again, not food, but things that can be put there, and people can take if they want to do that. So kind of a trick or treating thing, except that it's out there for people to take.
Is the parade part of it? Is the parade still on?
That's not REC, that's NDA.
The parade is still on, as announced, Town Hall. They're going to make that decision about two weeks ahead of time.
REC's not involved with the parade, but again, they decided to cancel the Extravaganza, just to reschedule. The Spirit of Philadelphia is this Saturday, the 18th. There are four tickets still remaining. If you would like to buy a ticket, call Paula and see if, as of today, there are still four of y'all, so there's a possibility of a bus. You get the details about that. There is a, I won't say controversy, but a discussion going on today through REC about whether or not to try to do pickleball on the tennis courts. If anybody's aware of pickleball, it's something that can be played indoor. I know when I went to the Y, they had pickleball courts on the basketball courts, it was small enough to fit there. What this would involve is repainting lines within the tennis court, still keeping the tennis court as a tennis court, but creating this smaller court within the tennis court for pickleball. So some of the members are in favor, some are not. They're debating, if any of you out there watching the meeting have interest in pickleball, please call Paula and get your input, because we're looking to see whether it's worth doing. We've had maybe a half dozen people interested, and again, REC is debating whether.
It's very successful.
It is a very successful program. I've had feedback of people driving like a half an hour to do it, so.
Yeah.
And the issue would be that it would have to still be on the tennis court, but I believe they can do the pickleball on color.
That's what Hattletown did with their.
We had an example of that, yes. So I think it's doable, so. Again, if there's interest, that would certainly sway in one direction. If people are interested, please, please call Paula, because I, as I said, now it's kind of split handed now, so we'll see what happens with the REC, what they decide to do about that. The only thing I think is down the line, November 27th, tentatively, that is the winter.
Excuse me, say again?
It's November 27th. The Winter Extravaganza tentatively, again, with COVID, who knows? But as of now, we're planning to do the Winter Extravaganza on November 27th. I believe that was a Saturday.
It's November 27th.
Let me definitely have that. And I believe that is, oh, one other thing, REC is going to do the Halloween decorating contest again this year. I don't think you have to register, I don't see anything in here about that. You can check with Paula, but the deal is if you decorate your house for Halloween on October 28th and 29th, members of REC will drive around the Borough Judge, as they did last year. First place gets a $100 gift card, second place 50, and third place $25. So it's certainly something worth checking into if you're so inclined to decorate your house for Halloween. The 28th and 29th is one REC review. And again, if you want to check, I don't believe you have to register, so I believe if you decorate your house, you're fair game as long as you live in the borough. But you can always call Paula if you want to specifically, if you recognize, that certainly would, but there is no formal registration for the decorating at this point, if you still. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Does any member of council have any question or comment for Councilman Boyer at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along then to Finance and Library, Councilman Peter Williamson.
My report should be brief tonight. I'll start off with the ratification of payment of last month's bills. From the General Fund, we drew $279,323.13. From the Recreation Fund, $5,477.67. And from our Capital Fund, $249,122.63. I move approval of August bills.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? There is a second? There is a second, is there any discussion or comment concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of payment of the borough's bills for August 2021 in the amount of $533,923.43, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll do my, what few announcements I have after this second action item. And that is one of the largest expenses we have every year, is the amount we contribute to our pensions for both our police officers, which makes up the principal amount, and for what are called non-uniform employees, which are basically everyone else that receives pension. The numbers for this year are $755,000, I'm rounding off, $755,000 for the police and $92,000 for the non-uniforms. Now, if we have to have the exact numbers read out loud, I will have Brittany do so.
The minutes need to, the minutes need to reflect with the exact numbers, not the orders.
Okay, Brittany, if you would be so kind to give us the exact numbers, say, do I While they wait, I will make a comment. Media Borough is actually, and I will use this word specifically, extraordinary in its commitment over the long term, over decades, to keep our pension funds healthy and strong. Both our pension funds are in the 90% category, as far as the difference between what a full plate would be and where we are, that is extraordinary across the state of Pennsylvania. Many municipalities in the state are 30%, 40%, or, in some of the better words, at 50%. We are in much better shape, for anyone listening. We made that commitment and we've kept it for a long time. The actual numbers?
The MMO for the police pension plan is $755,639. The MMO for the non-uniformed employees is $92,542.
Thank you for the specific numbers. I move adoption of the 2022 municipal obligation for non-uniformed employees and police officers. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion or comment concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the 2022 municipal obligation for non-uniformed employees in the amount of $92,542, and for police officers in the amount of $755,639, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
I just have a few comments then on the general, the budget. We're at the, we're at the beginning of next year's budget season, but as far as 2021 goes, we didn't know quite what to expect, but apparently, we made some pretty good conservative judgments, because at the present time, we, our revenues are still running well ahead of our expenses. Now, the MMO checks that I just mentioned will put a significant dent in the extent to which our revenues are ahead of expenses, but still, we will have a healthy surplus to consider. Now, before any of us get too excited though, I want you all to remember that we put a significant chunk of money in as a plug out of our savings account to make this year's budget work. So we think we're going to end up with a solid number at the end of the year, and it's been trending well, and, but, you know, we'll see. And we'll be taking that into next year's budget as well, where we have some federal funds that we can count on, pandemic funds, but we still don't know exactly where the regional economy will go. One indication there of that though, a good, strong one, is that our local tax revenues, which is a number we always look at very carefully, have been very strong this year, and they're actually running ahead of schedule, which is very different from last year, so I have some confidence that the regional economy is solid. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for Councilman Williamson at this time?
Peter, talking about the MMO, I know that Finance has been talking about RFP for Pension Advisor, is that going to move forward this year, is that going to be, because this has been a crazy year, I was sure it was going to be kicked in 2022.
You know, we'll have to take it up at the Finance Committee meeting. Brittany, will you please add that to the agenda so we can make sure we discuss it? It tends to fall off the radar call, so thank you for reminding me.
All right, unless there are any other comments or questions, we will move along to Councilman Sarah Dixon, Personnel, Public Relations, and Historical Archives.
Thank you. Let's get the legislative part done. I'm wanting to have a motion to promote Matt Egan to the rank of lieutenant on the media of the police department. That's a motion.
Second.
All right, straight to it, motion's been made and it has been seconded, any discussion or comment concerning the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving promotion of Matt Egan to the rank of lieutenant within our police department, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. It passes unanimously.
And.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Matt.
Lieutenant Egan.
Okay, and as far as publicity, on public relations, let's see, Bill Whitaker came and made the news because of his family being here, really because his birthday was the next day, but they talked about the media publisher house and Gail and, I mean, they know all over there. Also, we mentioned this already, but Adam Luden and the Historic Archives are really helping out, really doing a lot of work to make sure that this heritage park, and I think we need to keep that in mind, that our Historic Archives are also helping us. That's all I have to offer for today.
Any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilman Sarah Dixon? I'll just add a note of thanks to three members of council, Councilman Williamson, Councilman Boyer, and Councilman for Vice President Amy Johnson, for their continued work over the past roughly four years in shepherding that project through, the Pocket Park at Fifth and Brumals. It has been a lot of time, a lot of effort, and the hard work really shows. Anybody who has not visited that park ought to do so. It is now blooming up quite nicely, and it's really going to be a tremendous asset to our community. So thanks to them, as well as to all of the many members of the public who were part of that process. This was not just the three persons on high saying, make it so, but this was the three members of this council who spent much time talking collaboratively with members, with residents, and with professionals, to come up with a true asset for our community, so thanks to all of them. All right, we have the opportunity for public comment and privilege of the floor. If there's anybody who wishes to address council, please come, well, first, Karen Rapinoe, have we received any emails since the start of tonight's meeting?
No, we haven't.
All right, we have not. Any member of who is present who wants to make a comment or ask any question of council, please come to the microphone, tell us your name, where you live, and what's on your mind. Well, it looks as if we don't have any takers for a book in public comment and privilege of the floor, so we now have the opportunity to entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good night, folks, see you next month.